Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the May 12, 2022 Board of Selectmen meeting, still both virtual and in person. And before we start, Lauren and Janet told me that since I'm doing such a good job at First Selectmen that I can handle it from now on, and I get the vote, and they're going to support all my votes, so it's really good. I didn't know they're actually not feeling very well, so we wish them a speedy recovery, and happy birthday to Janet, it's her birthday today, and belated happy birthday to Lauren, who celebrated hers last Saturday. So with that, we will start the meeting with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. It is on. Can you hear me?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the May 26 meeting?
No, it consists of postponement.
Oh. Oh, the minutes will be postponed, okay. All right, should put my glasses on. We will go right up over to the updates. I will start it off. There is a cleanup at St. Paul's Church in Byram this Saturday, the 21st. Later that day, at 3:30, we will have the 84th Commissioning at the Greenwich Boat and Yacht Club. Sunday, we have a, was it this Sunday or is it next Sunday, Constantinos? This Sunday, there is a UJA JCC Team Changemakers Award at the Greenwich Boys and Girls Club, and that is at 2 o'clock this Sunday. Monday, the 23rd, we start Boat Safety Week, and we'll have a proclamation here at Town Hall. Wednesday, the 25th, we're doing, there is a forum on exploring the wealth divide in Greenwich. It's a panel discussion in the Cone Room here at 7 o'clock. I will be honored to take part in that. There is, I want to also thank everybody for this past week. We did the budget, the RTM. I want to thank all the RTM members, BET members, all the department heads, employees that participated, and certainly our volunteers. It was a long meeting, but certainly, even if we disagree on some of the items, the work that goes into it each and every day is certainly appreciated. We had a launch of the Big Brother Big Sister in Greenwich the other night. It's an organization that's been around for about 120 years. Strangely, haven't really had a presence here in Fairfield County, so my former colleague, State Representative Andy Fleishman, is the CEO of that, and he called me a few months ago and asked if, you know, thought it was a good idea to have something in Greenwich, and IC France stepped right up to help with that. So it was a great launch, and we're looking forward to all the services they provide, mainly mentoring youth here in Lower Fairfield County, but specifically here in Greenwich. We also went to the Gems Award that night, later that night, over in Riverside, and lots of deserving people getting recognition for their great work that they provided gems. This, I think, next Friday, or this Friday, we have a ribbon cutting at Nitnoy, which is a new restaurant in Cos Cob. Saturday at 10, going back to Saturday, there's a cleanup in Pembwick. It's on the Pembwick roadside of the river, and we hope to do one later this month or in June where we actually kayak, because there's lots of debris in the middle of that river, so we want to set that up probably for early June. Later, on Saturday, 11:30, Sofias, who had a store here in Greenwich, is now opening up in Cos Cob, so that will be at 11:30. The old Greenwich Yacht Club Commissioning is at 1:00. And this Sunday is the Constantinos ribbon cutting at 12 o'clock. That's a new pizza and ice cream place over on the border of Greenwich and Portchester. And Riverside's doing their commissioning at 2:30 that day. Public Works Week starts next week, Monday, so we'll be doing a proclamation out in front of Town Hall. And I believe that is, I believe that is it. Oh, the Greenwich Boys and Girls Clubs Awards, 6:30 on the 18th. And we'll be doing another guest bartending at the Cos Cobber North on Friday, the 20th. All proceeds to go to charity. So thank you for listening, and I will look at the screen. I'm looking right at Janet, the birthday girl, so we'll start with you.
Thank you, Fred. As many of you may know, I tested positive for COVID last night, so I will be isolating at least until Monday. And I would like to highlight a few of the many fun and meaningful events that I would have attended had I not been isolating. Tonight, from 5:30 to 7:30, the Greenwich Historical Society launches its Discover Greenwich Program series with a cocktail party to celebrate its 90th anniversary. To register, go to greenwichhistory.org. Also, tonight at 7 o'clock, the Cos Cob Library will be hosting a program organized by the Greenwich Conservation Commission and Pollinator Pathways titled Ecological Landscaping: A Voice for Nature Healing the Waters, Caring for the Land Through Landscape Design. To register for this free event, go to the Conservation Commission section of the town calendar, www.grenwichct.gov. And I think Fred might have already mentioned this, my audio wasn't doing so hot. On Saturday, May 21st, the Byram Community Cleanup will take place from 9 to 1:00. And also, on May 21st, the Mayanis River Fishway will host an open house from 2:00 to 4:00 in observance of World Fish Migration Day. Parking will be available at River House Greenwich Adult Day Center. And that's it from me. Thanks.
Thanks, Janet. Good morning, Lauren.
Good morning, everyone, and happy birthday, Janet, fellow tourist. I'll keep it brief, because I know that we have interviews for the building, Central Middle School Building Committee, coming up. We have interviewed 15 people so far. We have five to go. And just wanted to let everyone know, Free Music Fridays are resuming this summer. Our first day event will be on Friday, June 10. And then we're also adding three evening versions this year, so our first evening event from 5:00 to 7:00 will be on June 17. And this year, we are opening up the events to sponsorships, and if anyone's interested, it would go through our 501(c)(3) Greenwich Forward, so feel free to reach out to me directly. Thanks.
Thanks, Lauren. Looking forward to that. There is no old business, so we'll go right to new business, and we have an amendment to the Affordable House Housing Trust Ordinance and Affordable Housing Declaration of Trust and Review of the Draft of the Town of Greenwich Affordable Housing Plan with Assistant Town Attorney Amina Ahmed and Town Planner Katie Toluca. Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. Nice to see you, Fred.
Nice to see you too, Katie.
This is fun, it's like just interesting experiences, talking to Fred, knowing that there's a whole host of people out there.
Kind of weird, isn't it?
Yes, it is a little. So we're going to go a little bit out of order, if that's okay, and start with the plan. So this is a plan that was written by a group of people, Bob Barilak from the Planning and Zoning Commission, Margarita Alman, the Chairperson of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Bill Finger, Ellen Galvin, Brooks Harris, Peter Berg, and Ed Lopez. And we've met many times over the course of recent history. This was something that did start as a conversation, at least, with the recent plan of conservation and development in 2019, but it is a state requirement that each municipality have a plan that's approved in June. So we will be going to the RTM at the June 13 meeting, assuming that the Board of Selectmen moves it forward today. There's, I just gave you a quick summary, if that's okay? I think that's probably the best thing to do. Having said that, I would encourage everyone to read the full plan. It's pretty short in terms of plans, and you can access it on the Town of Greenwich website. And we do encourage you to submit comments to public and anyone else who's interested. There's still time to get in any revisions that are needed. So with that, there's six main goals and ideas behind what's written in the plan. The first is to encourage the conversion of existing housing into affordable units. The second is to encourage the construction of new affordable housing units for rental as opposed to for sale. The third is to encourage more affordable housing units and deeper affordability in proposed new buildings, especially encouraging larger units suitable for families to be set aside as affordable. Fourth is to mitigate the size and scope of proposed mixed-income buildings that include affordable housing units. Fifth is to deepen affordability and preserve for extended terms the affordability of existing housing units. And sixth is to encourage more workforce housing, which is differentiated from affordable housing in that it's really designed for town employees, and the income limit with which the below-market-rate units are capped at for people that would be eligible is based on the average town employee salary. So that's different from what we're talking about in the Affordable Housing Plan, where we define affordable housing as the same definition that the state has, which has a lower income limit. I would just note that this is just one part, the pieces that I read there, this is a multi-pronged approach to deal with this complex problem, and so the plan kind of incorporates all of the issues, but there are other avenues that we're exploring also to deal with our below-market-rate housing needs. And part of that is, as described in the plan, has to do with gap financing options, because when you have below-market-rate units, you want to, you have to subsidize them somehow, so whether that is through government monies or through offsetting it with market rate monies, that's how you would do it, one way or another. So other ways that we're going to meet the goals I just read is to look at our zoning regulations, see what we can do there, partner with Greenwich communities, really try to focus and encourage people to build accessory dwelling units as a means of adding to our affordable housing stock, look at potential abatement options, look at town or state-owned land. And lastly, and very importantly, to encourage sustainably focused and historically sensitive development that's in keeping with our infrastructure. So without, I could go on, but I'm going to just stop there.
Thank you so much. Before I turn it over to my colleagues on questions, just for clarification, the workforce set aside, that would not be counted towards the affordable 10% goal?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. Just so we clarify. And then accessory units, I know we've allowed that for decades, but except for where they were multifamily units, is that going to change at all? Like, in other words, if there's a two-family house and someone wants to make their basement, add that in there, would that, is that being looked at or no?
We have discussed it. What you're talking about is allowing these units in what we call the R6 zones, so it's like Byram, Chico, Hominie, Pembwick. And we have discussed it, and that might be something that we do in the future. We have just substantially overhauled our accessory dwelling unit regulations to make them much more friendly, if you will. The units can be larger, when and how you do it is much more relaxed, so you can do accessory structures, you can have the unit in the accessory structure. You can also build a house brand-new and build an in-law suite into the house, which that's new, that used to be that you had to have the house on the tax records for at least five years. So we've just done a big overhaul, and we did change the income limit to state medium income. That's important, because then they do count towards the state's requirements, because right now we only have two out of our 10 or so that count, because they came under an old rule.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the clarification. Lauren, Janet, any questions or comments?
Well, I'll just say, give a shout-out to Katie and Margarita and the whole team that this is excellent work. I've been following the creation of this plan. Hi, Margarita. I've listened, you know, I've listened in to the programs that were hosted by the League of Women Voters, and most recently by the Round Hill Association, so I'm quite familiar with the plan. I applaud your efforts. I think we can all agree that 830G is flawed, but we need to do more than just say we don't like this statute. We need to move forward. Whether or not we get credit for affordable housing or not, we have to try to meet our community's needs, and I think that this plan is the way, a way forward. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Janet. And let's see if Lauren has any comments or questions.
I don't know, I was having trouble going off of mute. So no questions echo Janet's sentiments, so thank you very much, and look forward to continued participation on the Trust Board.
Thank you, Lauren. Okay, and again, thank you.
You so much.
Katie, and everybody who helped work on this and put it together. You not looking for a vote today?
Oh, yes, we very much would like to vote today.
To be on the June.
Simply so we could get on to the June meeting, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm fine, but I know it's the second read sometimes, just wanted to discuss it, but I'm okay with it. If my colleagues are, we'll entertain a motion to approve.
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWigan, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWigan, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Katie. Thanks. Next up, we have a lease renewal for the Children's Day School and the Western Greenwich Civic Center, and we have Attorney Amina Ahmed here.
Good morning, Mr. First Selectmen, members of the board. Actually, could we go back to the item on the agenda that's the Affordable Housing Ordinance and Trust Amendment?
Yes.
So it was all put under the same item?
Oh, okay.
With the Affordable Housing Plan. And then we'll get to the lease, if that's okay with you.
Okay. Two for one.
Okay. So what you have before you are amendments to the Affordable Housing Trust Ordinance, as well as the Affordable Housing Declaration of Trust. And here, Mr. Bob Barilak was right here, I think he may have stepped out, but he is the newly-elected chairman of the Board of Trustees of the Affordable Housing Trust Board. The reason for the amendments that are before you, Mr. First Selectmen and members of the board, is, as you know, the BET has allocated $1.1 million of the American Rescue Plan Act funds towards the trust fund. And when they did that, they imposed certain conditions on that money that would be going to the trust. And the conditions were really based on the U.S. Department of Treasury's final rule, which set certain deadlines in terms of by what time the money needs to be committed for a certain purpose, and by what time it needs to be spent. So when the BET was reviewing the allocation of $1.1 million towards the trust, they wanted to be sure that all the Treasury regulations and requirements would also be complied with, so that once this money went into the trust fund, and if there were a situation where the money could not be spent for the purpose for which it was allocated to the trust, then the money would be able to come back to the town and back into the ARPA pot of money so that it could be reallocated for another allowed purpose. And so that's why they placed those conditions on the allocation, because currently, both the ordinance and the declaration of trust specifically say that no monies from this trust fund can be used by the town for any other purpose, and that money can't be put into the town's general fund or any other account. So we saw a need to amend that provision in order to comply not only with the BET's condition, but also allow the town to repurpose those funds if they're not able to be used for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Thank you. For a point of clarification, if the money were to go back into the pot, as you said, we're still under a deadline as far as timeline goes.
Yes, yes.
So if that money somehow came back, say, after 2026, we would lose the money?
No, so that's a very, very good question. That's why the BET has used some dates that give the town enough time to repurpose those funds, so that you'll see two dates here, December 31, 2024, in the amendment. So the funds have to be returned to the town if the funds are not committed by December 31, 2024, or expended by December 31, 2026. And it also says that the Board of Trustees know later than December 31, 2024, have to give notice to the BET that the funds will not be committed for that purpose. So the BET, in its wisdom, has built in that cushion, so that the funds can come back to the town, back to the ARPA pool of money to be reallocated.
Thank you, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that. So thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Any questions or comments for Amina?
I'm just going to say, again, thank you for all the work that's gone into this. I'm actually having a hard time hearing, but there are landscapers outside of my window, and they're not ours, because we're participating in no mo may. But I have been following this issue, so I understand what you just explained. And again, thank you for your work in making sure that we don't lose this funding if something were to come up.
Thank you, Janet. And I don't see--
No questions.
Thanks, Lauren. Okay, then we'll vote to ask for a motion to accept these amendments.
Yes, please, because we would like to go to the RTM.
Sure, thank you.
Yes.
So do we have a motion to accept these amendments?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWigan, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWigan, yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is the lease for Children's Day School at the Bentham Western Greenwich Civic Center. This is pretty straightforward. The lease is on its second renewal, will be finishing its first five-year renewal term, and the Children's Day School has requested, under its option, to renew it for another five-year renewal term. So there are no changes to the lease, and all the insurance that the town requires is in place. And I do want to mention that Tricia Triano is here from Parks and Rec. She is the supervisor for the Civic Center, and is very familiar with the operations of the Children's Day School there. And if you have any questions for her, she's available to answer any questions.
Thank you.
But again, pretty straightforward. The current five-year term will expire June 30 of this year, and so they've asked for an additional five-year term, which is written into the lease. So again, it's an administrative type of approval if the board should move to go forward with it. And one other thing I do want to mention, the lease has a built-in rent escalator, so you'll see that from my memo, and the amount will increase starting July 1. The rent will increase to $58,719 per year.
Great. Thank you. And I know the risk manager has reviewed this, so I am fine with this to take a vote today. My colleagues are, if they have any questions or comments?
They're a good neighbor, so happy to approve it. But I was confused in the letter that came from the Executive Director, because it's saying that the second five-year renewal will commence on July 1, 2021, but does that, should it happen at 2022?
Yes, so that, I believe, is a typo.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. All right, I don't see any other comments or questions. So is there a motion to accept this lease renewal?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWigan, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo is a yes.
Thank you.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWigan, yes.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Amina. Appreciate that. Okay, next up is the 2022 Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act Program Proposals, and we have CDB Jeep Block Administrator Tyler Fairburn here. Good morning, Tyler.
Good morning, members of the Board of Selectmen. I am here. This is our annual public meeting that we do for the Neighborhood Assistance Act Program. As a bit of background, this is a state program run through the Department of Revenue Services, where nonprofits can apply for a tax credit project if they get matched up with a private business who's willing to sponsor their project. The state then puts the two of them together, and they get the funding, the business gets the tax credit. The town really just acts as a, really not even a pass-through, as we are with some of our other grants. There's no need to bring this before the BET, there's no budget for us. Really, what we do is, you know, the public notice, the application intake, and then put everything together and send it to the state. So we had eight applications this year. After noticing the program application availability in March, we do a 30-day period, we collect the applications, review them for program compliance, and then bring it here for our public meeting, and then on to the RTM in June, prior to submitting to the state by July 1. So if there are any questions about the program or the proposals, I'm happy to answer them.
No, thank you. I know you're always very thorough, so thank you for all the work you do and for a lot of these great programs and organizations. So thank you, and I know we have to get this to the RTM for the June call. Let's see if Lauren or Janet have any questions or comments.
This is an annual program, correct? It just feels, it feels like we just approved this.
It does, and you know what happens with this, Lauren, is that, you know, we, so you know, we put it together now, we send it to the state in July, and then we don't hear, we don't hear back from the state as to which programs were approved and matched with sponsors until December, and then we notice it on the website. So it's kind of like a rolling eight-month process before it comes to a conclusion, and you're starting the next one again.
Got it. Thank you, and thanks for all the work that you do in this effort.
Thank you.
Likewise, likewise, thank you.
Thank you, Tyler. So we'll, thank you. So is there a motion to accept the proposals as provided by, presented by Tyler?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWigan, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWigan, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Tyler. Appreciate it. Next up, we have the lease renewal for Ableus at 101 Orchard Street. It's the contemporary house on the Pomerant's property, and do we have--
We were notified late yesterday that this is being postponed until the next meeting, I'll be 26.
Okay. Okay, so the document you have for this, for 101 Orchard Street, we'll just keep it, and we'll take it up to the next Board of Selectmen meeting. Which brings us to, I guess, the last item, which is the road closure request for Brookside Drive, and we have AJ Penna and Sons Construction for Aquarian Water Company. And do we have a rep?
Yes, good morning, Mr. First Selectmen and members of the board. How are you today? I'm Dino from AJ Penna.
Hey, Dino, good morning. How are you?
Good. So today, we are requesting for a road closure, a daily road closure for a water main replacement project from Aquarian Water that will be happening on Brookside Drive in Greenwich. This road closure will be from Grove all the way to Field Point. This encompasses US 1 as well. And reason for the road closure is we are going to be working roughly on the southbound side of Brookside, leaving the north side lane sort of narrow for traffic and any sort of pedestrian passing. We split it into two sections, so the first section will be the Section 1 detour for Brookside Drive, which the section will be closed. Grove Lane, West Putnam Ave, traffic will be detoured through the Grove Lane section, Deerfield, West Putnam, and through a portion of Brookside Drive. And this will happen up until we get to US 1. And then after we get through US, through the intersection at US 1, we will start Section 2 detour. This is the Brookside Drive will be closed, West Putnam Ave, Field Point Road, traffic will be detoured through the West Putnam Ave, Brookside Drive, Field Point Road, and Prospect Street. This water main replacement job is roughly $2,300. This water main replacement job is roughly 2,300 feet. And the section of Greenwich where we plan to dig is actually very difficult, and we project roughly 40 feet per day. So this can last, you know, anywhere from one to one and a half months of work. But we would like to get through it much, much sooner. And by having a road closure, we will allow the crews to operate optimally and efficiently.
Thank you, Dino. What are the dates?
So currently, we are contingent on permitting. Greenwich is in the review process for the bid group F, which encompasses Brookside Drive. We were supposed to hear back last week. I will follow up with the town and see what the status of the permitting is. I am projecting currently that we will be around Brookside mid-June.
Mid-June, okay. And at the most, it'd be a month, month and a half at the most. Hours of operation? Is this a 24-hour operation or just a certain period?
This will be a daily 7 o'clock to 3:30, and then the roads will be reopened every day.
Okay. All right. So this, since we're just reading it now, will you be coming back once you've gotten the approval from the town for a vote?
Yes.
Okay.
We were hoping to get the approval today, if we can, just because we've been waiting very diligently for all the permitting to come through. And I just don't want this permitting delay to withhold and push this along through the summer.
Have you contacted the people on Grove Lane and in that vicinity before we approve something? I haven't, you know, heard anything. But we approve something, and then we start to get phone calls, they're going to say, you know, if they weren't notified, that we jumped the gun.
One week prior, Mr. First Selectman, one week prior, Aquarian will send out letters and notifications to all the, to basically everyone in the shutdown section. And they do all the notifications prior to any, to even stepping on site.
Okay, thanks, Dino. I would be more comfortable if we wait until the 26th until we know that people, everybody's been contacted. Because we've been down this road before, where if somebody's not contacted and they have an objection, then we've jumped the gun and we didn't do our due diligence. So if you, you know, while you're getting the approvals and contacting people, I think that gives us a little bit of time in the next two weeks. And then I think you'd be more prepared to present here, and certainly we'll give you the okay.
Okay, great. When would be the next time?
The 26th of May.
26th of May, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dino.
Thank you.
I agree wholeheartedly. I would go actually one step further. We're talking now about road closures, but very clearly, when you've got water main work, you're going to be turning off, Aquarian's going to be turning off the water main. And so we want to make sure that those residents are aware that they're going to be, you know, without water at various points. And not to mention, when the water comes back, you know, there's a lot of, I'm going to use my engineering terms, the turbidity. They're going to see dark water coming out of their faucets and spigots. So I think it would be really important that we notify everyone.
Thank you, Janet. Yes, and if, Dino, if you could, the company could just provide some copies and notification. This way, if we get called on it, that we could say you absolutely did, and we have proof of that.
Yes, no problem.
Thank you, Dino.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't see any other questions or comments. Dino, thanks so much. We'll see you in two weeks.
We'll see you then. Thank you, guys.
Have a good weekend.
Have a good weekend.
Thank you. Okay. This is the public comment section. I know we have some people joining us virtually. The room seems to have emptied out here. So just a few of us left. I don't see any hands raised. So thank you for joining us today and enjoy the rest of the day, the beautiful weather.
Fred, can I just comment on public comment?
Yes, you can.
So, you know, let's not forget that the media is also the public. So, you know, if any journalist in the virtual room has any questions, this is a great time to ask them.
Yes, well, I'll put a condition on it. If they're in the media, they have to be fans of the New York Yankees. Otherwise, we won't entertain.
The best team in New York, the New York Yankees? Unstoppable, New York Yankees? Unlike those joke New York Mets? Wow, come on!
All right. He is out of order. Try to mute him, please. All right. I don't see it. Thank you, Janet. Rich, Ken, I don't see anybody else, I don't see anybody raising their hand, so--
No raised hands here. I'm just trying to wrap my brain around the fact that I won't be able to get to my office during this construction on the water main, so--
Well, you have two weeks to contact us with complaints and concerns.
I'll let my editors handle that.
Thanks. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks, everybody, for attending. Our town attorney, Barbara, was on the ready, at the ready here, and certainly Jenny and Barb, thank you so much. Have a great day.